On our audio and turn on our video. And Nicole is now with us. Oops. I just need to change the. So people stop looking at me and look at the owl. There we go. Okay, we are ready.
Happy Tuesday. We're gonna get this Easton School District meeting going. We'll go ahead and do the section two point one, the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and just.
Okay.
All right, skipping to three. Opening up for any additions, deletions, or changes in the items?
Yeah, we have had one addition. We have added eight point one, which is a quote for some replacement garage doors. So I've added that to our agenda.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, on to four, public comment. Can confirm, we do not have any public here in the library today to provide any comment, but how about online?
I haven't received any emails or information from anybody wanting to offer public comment.
All right, off to the consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to review everything?
Thank you.
All right, and into our very exciting financial update section, take it away.
Yes, Nicole is there.
Yes, here. So this is our, our cash graph, our three-year average. And the orange line there in the center is our twenty percent minimum fund balance policy, showing that our cash is just over one million dollars.
Okay, sorry for the delay.
And this is our GLTB, not a lot to point out here, just wanted to tell you that everything on that reconciles exactly to our system. So there's no discrepancies there. And that one in the county treasures report is what I used to tie to. And this is the county treasures report that matches the GLTB that you just viewed.
I like it when the financials are.
Yeah, all lined up. Yeah, and then this is our budget status report. We're reporting that we're seventy-five percent of the way through the year. As you'll see, our ending fund balance is just over a million dollars there at twenty-seven percent fund balance policy. We have plans to use that this summer with some upkeep in maintenance. We have a purchase, our purchase order for the van just came through today. And so we're gonna be having some large purchases that will decrease that fund balance before the end of the year. But I have gone ahead and approved those because they are needs that the district is needing. And so I, so Erin and I are on board with making those start purchases for the summer.
And Nicole, what is your, your estimate of our Indian fund balance?
So I did it projected again today, and I think it's gonna be between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars is where I'm thinking we're gonna land the year. I'm just waiting for some of those big purchases to come through to really get a better idea with our everyday AP runs. I was kind of running it off where we ran last year's AP, and I don't know if June, July, and August will be higher or lower than they were last month. So, so I'm, I'm roughly around that, in that mark there.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that's through the end of the school year, the end of the year, yeah.
Yep. Oops.
And then I didn't know, did you want to go through it? There's other funds if we want me to go through those. Our capital projects fund has an ending fund balance of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The only activity in the debt service fund was I made a transfer from transportation vehicle fund to the debt service fund to make our bus payment. So that's why you'll see that six thousand dollars there in our fund balance. And then ASP has an ending fund balance of, this, this balance is a little off. I have a ticket in with Sipsey, which is our software programmers. I tried to merge some accounts and it threw off one of our, it doubled one of our accounts. But this one is more around the twenty-five thousand dollar mark and for ASP.
Not their great fundraising?
We, we like the forty-seven thousand, but.
Yeah, I know, I saw that. I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. It's, it's higher. And you'll see in the county treasures report too, the actual cash balance. And then the transportation vehicle fund has an ending fund balance of nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four. And the only other thing I have to report on is we started our audits. We had an audit entrance conference. And then Catherine and I both met with them on how our processes work for when she prints AP payroll and how I review them as well as Erin. We met with them again today. They wanted to talk about our employee contracts and how they're issued and reviewed and signed and all, all of the little things. And they haven't given me much more information on what they're reviewing. They've asked for my reconciliations for August twenty twenty-three and August of twenty twenty-four. So I've sent all those off. So it's still a lot in the back and forth with me and the auditors. But I haven't, I think they're still just looking through things and there's not really a whole lot to report on yet. But I wanted to make sure I gave you an update and let you know that if I know more, I'll definitely communicate that with you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for, for being there for us as well, for that whole process. And I apologize because I didn't realize that meeting was gonna happen yesterday or would have tried to jump in that. But I do have a better understanding now from reaching out to Josh about what the timelines are and when we might be needed. And he did say that he would give me a week's note, like a heads up so that, you know, we can get more people there. I stopped doing it, so thank you.
Yeah, so this meeting was just more of the areas they were gonna look at. So yeah, so they're still just looking. Yes, there's not a whole lot to report on, but definitely wanted to keep you guys in the loop just because I know we've had prior audits that we don't want to repeat.
Provided was excellent, explaining, you know, exactly what they're looking for and it, I think it's just gonna help us find any little issues if there are any and improve.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, the only other thing I'll, I'll point out is we received an email from OSPI that the state is going to be short about seventy million dollars for June apportionment payments. So we will not be receiving June's, June's full allocation. But it sounds like we will be getting it in July after they get everything shored up on their end.
So, and this is every district in the state?
Every district in the statewide will be, they're short seventy million dollars on apportionment payments for June. So they're going to be reducing all districts by, by a certain amount. And then giving them that money that they shorted them in July. But they're also giving us fifty dollars extra per pupil in June. So, so they're giving us more money that we weren't expecting, but they're also not giving us money we were expecting. But it should all shore up in July. And, but I'll report on June next month. So we won't really see how much they reduce it until we get, we get our reports.
Well, it makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that, that was sarcasm, so.
I know, I know. But I just wanted to say it's on my radar. I know about it. I just wanted to give you heads up before I report on June next month.
Is that fifty dollars per student continuing beyond?
No.
Nope, it's just a one-time payment. I don't know how it all came about, but they decided that all districts should receive fifty dollars per pupil and they were gonna pay it out one time and that was gonna be in June.
Okay. Good luck, thank you.
Yeah.
We're, I'm trying, I am trying.
Thank you, Nicole. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
All right, we'll hop into section seven, additional reports, seven one, district operations report, take it away.
All right, start with the maintenance report here. We did have water leak on the cameras. It looks like it started on Sunday morning. Came from a cooler coil in one of the fan cooling units. We threw out here what you see, tiles missing and library, so. Monday morning, received a call. Lake came down. I was able to locate where the lake was coming from, which was cooling coils, isolated the lake, turned the water off to that cooling unit. Cooling unit and then water cleanup process. Just today, we were able to clean the carpets and the district office here in the library and in conference room. Got most of that out. There's a little bit of staining, but for the most part, cleaned up. As far as damage to VCT, front entrance, the water pulled up there and then down the hallway. Lay a few of the tiles I had to replace in the primary hallway, up there in front, there's a hundred and twenty-one tiles mixed out there. Repair is adequate, but because of the warping of the sublayer, it's difficult, so I anticipate some of those times. We have contact with D nine flooring, exploring some options, exploring alternate flooring options for the school. Reduce maintenance, maintenance costs as well. P type flooring, it's got a protective coating over it. So with that said, I think this is a good opportunity to kind of see how it holds up as far as winter traffic does and traffic. Students walking over there and stuff like that, things that we have, we have a four hundred and twenty square foot area out there. Be a perfect opportunity for them to place them down there, see how it works out. I've reached out to D nine flooring, their state contract winner, they're gonna provide me with an estimate of how much that four hundred and twenty square foot cost to lay that down. It's not too terribly expensive and provides us with an opportunity to kind of get a real good insight on to how well the people. And hopeful that it'll hold up quite nicely. It's more cost. Effective solution than rubberized flooring, so. And it'll reduce maintenance costs over the long run, stripping, waxing, anything like that, OVC. Fungus. It comes with a protective coating over it that makes it waterproof and also kind of prevents damage to the flooring. Roll things over it, just like you can VCT. It's just, there are a lot of schools that are going to it. And they like at Ellensburg, one of their newer schools has it, has the opportunity to with their school. And so far, it's held up quite nicely. So I'm hopeful that the, that the estimate that they provide us isn't too terribly expensive and, you know, provides us with an excellent opportunity to see if that one holds up. So I guess what I'm saying is while the, the leak too terribly damaging, they're still relying to it. So that was, that was an interesting Monday morning. So that's what we've been working on for the last few days, put me behind a little bit, so I've been kind of stewing on what they put down for the sublayer underneath the floor, which is a underlayment fiber board. It is a type of underlayment for flooring, but why they put it at the main entrance is baffling to me. Anyway, I, I won't go on a rant about it, but anyway, that's where most of the swelling and warping happens, so. Anyway, I'm gonna contact McKinstry's if we can get that cooler coil repaired. It appears to me there is an older cooler coil that's up there, so it appears to me that this has happened once before, perhaps not as bad of a leak. But they have been repaired before. So my guess is there's something just within the water, whether it's the glycol water mix is not mixed to the ratio that should be because it has anti-corrosive material that, that's in it, that keeps those copper pipes from getting eaten like that. But the consistency isn't correct with the anti-corrosives, any minerals or anything like that in the water can eat through the copper pipe. It's the thinnest piping that's in those fan control units. So talking to McKinstry, they said they can send somebody out to repair it. There's a company called CH2O and they test the water. It's not an expensive test. They just test it, make sure the glycol water mix is adequate. And so we have adequate anti-corrosives in there, so it kind of prevents it from happening. Something that I'd like to explore and, you know, test it a couple of times a year. Cost allowing, anyway, a couple of times a year, so that way, you know, we can, I can do some preventative actions on it. Yes, sir.
Are there any options for electronic valves that you can put on those for when it detects a leak?
Oh, like it'll automatically shut it off?
As soon as it sends some water on a surface, it will.
I'm not sure. I could certainly ask McKinstry if there's an option for that. I know there are low pressure alarms. So it'll send a notification, an email or phone or whatnot saying, hey, there's a reduced pressure because there's a leak. And it'll just notify you right away so I can just come down before it becomes a terrible leak.
Absolutely.
Turn it off. I do know there are those, whether or not there are automated controls that will shut it off automatically. I can understand these probably are. So I could certainly ask McKinstry about that and see.
Yeah, I feel like they do something similar for hot water tanks.
How's that?
I feel like they do something similar for hot water tanks.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, so I'm sure they have something like that for, you know, fan control units, so. I'll, I'll ask McKinstry about it. That's, that's, that's a good suggestion. See if I can get a price from you, how much it'll cost.
Just, just to know.
Yeah, and even if it wasn't, you know, on each individual, individual FCU. Even if there was a drop in pressure, it just cuts it off to all of them, you know, and they can locate, you know, where it's at, you know, or not. You know, that might be, you know, get one.
Some form of bell safe just to save the ceiling.
Yeah, one, one ring to rule them all, you know, kind of thing. So, yeah, no, that's a great suggestion. I'll ask McKinstry about that. I talked to John Shelby. He said they have somebody that's available and come out and get that prepared. With that said, we are working, or I would I proposed to Erin that we set up a maintenance contract for the AC units or boilers. Cooler and freezer. It's preventative maintenance move, not something that I'm an expert in, so it'd be difficult for me to, little look at it. I, I know when something's wrong, but I don't know how to necessarily pinpoint what is wrong. So essentially what the contract would do is it would, twice a year before the hard freeze, McKinstry would come out, then check everything, make sure everything's copacetic, money out, should be. And then before the big heat wave, they would come out again, check to make sure that things working properly and there are no issues that they're finding. Averaging it out, that, that would save the school. If I base it off the last four years averages, on average, we're spending about fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars on maintenance costs just on, you know, what it.
Figure.
If you combine the HVAC, the AC, or the blocking cooler and freezer, about fourteen thousand seven hundred a year. If we do the contract, that puts us down to about eleven thousand five hundred, so roughly twenty-five, so dollars in savings. Not a huge savings, but save some of that.
That's up to you.
Yeah, and, and in the long run, I think it would benefit us as well, just because we have those constant checks, somebody constantly checking them twice a year, making sure everything's running well. It goes right along with the preventative maintenance side of things rather than relying on reactive maintenance. Whereas that reactive maintenance can cost us a lot more money in the long. And, you know, with everything going on with the finances and state and everything, I think it'd be us to perhaps explore some of those more preventative maintenance options, you know, just to save us money in the long run.
Because then you can plan for your.
Exactly, exactly. And if they catch something that needs to be repaired or replaced, we can be proactive about it as far as, you know, allocating funds or trying to figure out, you know, how we're gonna pay for it ahead of time before it becomes a major issue, which can cause more damage, which costs more money.
Would that include them being able to help rebalance the AC because it's not functioning properly right along the window side? Everybody gets too hot over there, right? And then since it's too hot in the offices?
I think, I think that has more to do with tying it into the HVAC, so it has equal distribution as opposed to because right now the AC's, so for instance, in the district office, the AC's tied into the ductwork for the district office, but it doesn't go anywhere else. So, yeah, it gets frosty in there and then, you know, or if the AC's off, it gets terribly hot. So, and, and I'm not sure our AC's necessarily tied into our front end controls for HVAC units, so I wouldn't, you know, I could go in there and adjust the controls for the heating, so, you know, on hot days or whatnot, you know, I can, I can say, hey, I want the heat to turn off at this temperature and it'll turn off. That isn't necessarily the AC would turn off. That I would all depend. And maybe it is tied into front end controls or not.
So it's functioning the way it's supposed to. It's just more of like.
Yeah, AC units are functioning quite well. Last year, that's one of the things McKinstry came out and helped me get those operational again. We were able to clean the coils and the fans on there. But, so yeah, those, those have been running great. And, you know, all in all, our HVAC unit's been doing fairly well. It's just keeping up with the maintenance, making sure everything's taken care of. And, you know, checking the, checking the fluid levels, make sure we have adequate levels of anti-corrosives and that glycol mix so that it's very good. And it could be, it could just be that nothing ate through those, the cooling coil got frosty and it could just be that it just froze and it's like thrown it out. Got too frosty in there, no matter, I'm not really sure that someone had to have. But yeah, so far everything's running fairly well, how it should be. As far as the front end controls, there are a couple of rooms where I have no control or, they're just kind of on the last setting that they were on, to level. That, yeah, will fall under, not necessarily McKinstry, maybe a company like ASI or a company in Ellensburg that, you know, knows the front end controls of various different types of HVAC systems. They can look at that and say, okay, here's where the issue is. But as far as what I found out from ASI, our software is so updated that they don't actually have software updates for it. So they said a possibility is that those rooms aren't operational just because the software's outdated. But it could also be there's a wire came loose and so it's not communicating properly. So fishing through those wires and trying to figure out which one goes where is something that McKinstry can definitely help with, yeah, helped us in the past with that. That's how we're able to fix the multi-professional. Can't control the heating, but we're able to get it going. So during the winter time, it gets warm in there now. But there's a communication wire that's been disconnected, so.
Well, good luck with that. Also, just on the flooring side of things. Maybe this is an opportunity to try to get something that doesn't have endocrine disrupting phthalates and other chemicals. I, I don't know if it would be possible to ask them and see if they have flooring options that might be like manolium, which is made from linseed oil, tile, wood, low formaldehyde laminate, or concrete, even?
Yeah, we have, we have talked about doing a concrete surface.
I mean, especially here where the kids are all touching it. And, I mean, that's who it's impacting are the students and the people in that hallway, right?
Yeah, and they have nice concrete options, you know, where they can put a concrete surface and then they, you know, put a protective coating over the top of it. You can do all kinds of cool stuff, you know. It just runs into.
For those of us who have cancer down the road, it's priceless.
Yeah. Yeah, certainly something I can look into for other options there as well. We're still looking into various options, you know, I like to rubberize flooring. It's expensive, yeah, it's recycled, but it's sanitary.
What does it smell like?
Yeah, yeah, it smells like stuff.
Oh, rubber, yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, you know.
That's not the greatest either because when it decomposes, it's not right either.
And it's expensive. It's expensive. All right, so let's see, looking at the sports field progress, shipping containers have been moved, propane tank has been relocated. I've got permit to reconnect that. We relocated from the northwestern side to the northeastern side of the bus garage. And then, let's see, reserve grain field has caused some delays in progress, so, yeah, we'll call it a lost grain field. We think we have what's called a lost grain field. Kipas County does not have any record of our drain field. Washington State Department of Health has not had any record. Now, our drain field, from what I've found and just done research and everything, is our drain field was installed prior to two thousand and eleven. Prior to two thousand and eleven, Department of Ecology actually issued permits. Four lost drain fields. But then the county, the state has records of three operating lost drain fields. Ours is not one of them, so they're one actually lost. Now, if you look at our drawings, it's laid out as a lost drain field. So it's interesting that the state has no record, the county has no record. So I've reached out to Department of Ecology to see if we can find EAS belts or operating. In the event that we don't have any on record, the state doesn't have any, then essentially we'll have to get an engineer to come out. They look at our drainage field and they come, the lost drain field, they'll map it out as fast as they can and then issue us an operating permit. As of twenty twenty, every year we're supposed to renew an operating permit for a lost drain field. I think our school is falling through the cracks with the state because we have no operating permit. So. Yeah, and. Yeah, and talking to the Department of Health, they said that's not something that they're gonna come after us, um, for, just because we're being open about it, more communicating with them about it, so they just, they said if there's no record, they just like to start at square one, get an engineer out, get it mapped out, and then they'll issue us the operating permit and then we'll just go from there. Plainly just kind of go from there, so, um, you know, we'll be able to, uh, get that squared. As well as setting up a, a maintenance system, um, with, uh, an onset set to company or something, just to check it, our drain field, make sure everything's looking good. Um, the valve switches are operating cor- correctly, um, our drain field pipes are managed. Again, that falls under preventative maintenance side, saves us a lot of money in the long run as opposed to just waiting for it to fail because, you know, something we could have prevented. Gets passengers have checked out and that'll save us a hundred thousand dollars easy. To. Rather than digging, you know, trying to put something, it saves us quite a bit of money. Take care of that, so.
And that's the one where you were finding, uh, the cans, right?
Oh, yeah, the coffee can or the, uh, the, uh, one of the drain field, uh, inspection. Yeah, that was, that was interesting, and that's one of those ones that needs repairing, at least actually an off switch. It's a valve with a handle that you can turn, um, well, it it's broken off, so, um, I believe those pipes are plugged, so they'll need to be cleaned out, but, uh, lucky for us, it's plugged because it's not spewing sewage all over.
Right, yeah.
Um, that's, that's, that's a good thing, so for right now, I leave it plugged until we get somebody after repair. Um, and Department of Health, they said that's something I can repair, um, it's just PVC with an off switch, so that's something I'll probably be proactive in. Brian Jackson or somebody out back can, um, inspect it and make sure everything else is good to go with it. And so we can get, get there and make sure we're all good. But it has delayed the athletic field progress quite a bit because we have a reserved drain field. And if you have a lost system, you are required to have a reserved drain field, so, um, working with an engineer, we can see if we can get the current reserved drain field relocated. We don't have a lot of room to work with, so rather than making wide, short drain field, I propose to an engineer that we make a long and narrow drain field, if that's a possibility. Um, then, um, we can go out and dig test pits, they'll test soil, make sure it's adequate. Um, the soil is adequate and then he'll draw up a design for it. If we give the design for it, then we proceed with the athletic field, uh, because then we can take that. So, a, a bit of a. That is kind of opened up a bit of a can of worms, but, um, um, so we've had our, uh, test, our drinking water was tested April fifth, twenty twenty five, Department of Health came in, we partnered with, pardon me, Washington State Department of Health, they came in. They tested twenty-four outlets throughout the school, or, um, students and staff have access for drinking, uh, or cooking. Out of the twenty-four outlets, three outlets did have elevated lead levels above five parts per billion, and one outlet was at five parts per billion. Now, the cutoff is five parts per billion, so the one that's at five parts per billion, not a huge concern there, but I still want to mitigate that, so, um, there's a filtration system that's been installed with a new filter in it, um, that should put it well under five. So we change out the faucet. As, uh, they have faucets that are considered lead free, they still have certain elements of lead in them, they're just at a reduced level, um, as opposed to non-lead free.
It should be called low lead faucet, yeah.
Yeah, it it basically, they put it in there to keep it, the, you know, if you have hard water or anything like that, it keeps it from eating through the faucet materially. Um, but, um.
Is that an issue here?
How's that?
Is that an issue here or no?
Hard water? Uh, I'm not entirely sure, I know, um, we, we have healthy levels of, you know, mineral deposits, but, um, I'm not sure, I mean, we don't have a water softening system at the school here and I don't see pipes bursting left and right or, you know, faucets getting eaten through. It takes quite a while before it starts happening, um, from what I've seen, so I'm not too terribly concerned about that. Um, but nonetheless, uh, it's at five parts per billion, so I added a filtration system, I want to get any faucet on it, get twelve below that five parts per billion, just so I know everything's good to go. Um, the other three, um, there was one in the kitchen, um, that one is not a faucet that they use. Um, and so that one showed twenty-six parts per billion, um, which is well above five parts per billion, but again, that's not a faucet that they ever use, and so it's likely that, um, the water's just sitting there, and then when they went to turn it on and tested it, well, as the water stands, it starts to collect more and more lead, right? Especially if the faucet's not being used. I have turned that faucet off so nobody can use it, um, I do have a replacement faucet for it, that's a lead-free faucet. Um, I believe it's just the faucet itself, I don't think it's the supply line, because the supply line where that sink ties right into the, um, ice maker. And the ice maker, uh, tested less than two parts per, or, I'm sorry, less than one part per billion, so it would stand to reason that if any lead content was coming from the supply line, the ice machine should have, as well, should have high elevated levels, so I suspect that it is, um, the faucet and the fact that it's just not used, um, it probably collected those elevated levels, but either way, um, I turned the faucet off so it can't be used, I'm gonna replace the faucet, make sure, um, that we still can, you know, mitigate that and then we're, we're good to go with that.
Is that gonna open the sink backup for them then, or do they not?
It will open the sink backup, yeah. As long as, when we do the retest, as long as the elevated levels, um, are right where we want them, which is less than five parts per billion. Ideally, I want to see, like the other faucets, I want to see that less than one part per.
Yeah.
So, um, ideally, if it doesn't, um, I might just terminate that sink altogether. Since it's not being used, just make a water supply point for the ice maker, just terminate that faucet altogether. Um, if it's, if it's a machine or I just want to make sure that the air can.
Yeah.
Um, or preparing food. Now, Jackie, she's very good about, um, keeping the kitchen clean, um, making sure everything's, uh, squared away, so, um, knowing that that faucet's just not used, that it helps me feel a little bit better, um, makes me feel much better. Um, so, um, until I can get that faucet replaced, it will remain off and there will be fixes to it. Um, let's see, there was one sink in the, uh, spec classroom. Sixteen parts per billion came out of the sprayer, uh, the dishwasher sprayer, um, they don't use those, so again, it's likely that the water was just sitting in there, they activated it and it for that high content. I terminated those water sprayers though, because they don't use them for washing dishes, they have dishwasher there, um, they don't use them for rinsing or anything, so there's no point in having.
Yeah.
Um, so I just, I just terminated those. As far as the tap goes in the veteran, it showed six parts per billion, just one part per billion above, um, what's allowed. Um, so for those things, because I don't know which tap it is, I'm going to add filtration systems, bolt-on, change out the supply lines and change out the faucets on bolt-on, just to make sure we get back down, uh, to that less than one part per billion. Um, so that is our plan for right now, um, as far as, um, remediation and installation. Um, once all that's done, I will call the Department of Health, we'll get a scheduled date, we'll come back out and we'll retest the water. And as long as everything's good to go, we won't need to test for lead. Moving on to, uh, gym floor replacement. So Don Stenbet, um, he's been, uh, installing and, uh, repairing as well as maintaining gym floors for, uh, a good, a good long time. And, um, he has recommended that we start looking into getting a new gym floor. He does believe that it's becoming safety issue just because of the warping, um, there are some drive-off, um, outages, um, by the western wall of the gym. He said right now, while it's not a critical thing, is something to consider as a safety issue. Um, so I've been working with him, his estimate's about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's where they install. Um, first part of that though is I need to get it tested for asbestos, because the gym floor was installed in nineteen sixty-four or nineteen sixty-five. Um, there is a chance that there may be asbestos in there and we have to get that maybe before we can install a new gym floor. Um, but there's also a chance that there is no asbestos, that's kind of one of those years where they were just starting to kind of be like, eh, asbestos may not be a good thing. It's ruled that that is going to, yeah, in that, those years. Right, yeah, and so I've reached out to two asbestos companies, IRS Environmental and, um, A1 Asbestos out of Wenatchee and then IRS, uh, Environmental, they're out of Spokane. I've reached out to them, just to get a couple of quotes and see how much it would cost to get the testing done. So we'll get the testing done there, fingers crossed, no asbestos. Um, if there is asbestos, uh, we will explore, you know, what happens, uh, next there. That'll increase the cost of the gym floor installed, but, um, it also eliminates asbestos. So that's where we're at, that's gonna be the first part of the, uh, gym floor install, um, should we, you know, decide to continue, uh, for with it. The first part will be the asbestos testing, the basement.
Is that under the floor where it exists?
Yeah, it would be in the adhesive, that's under the floor, that holds the floor down, um, to its, its bracing. Um, so, um, we ha- I have some old pieces of the flooring, uh, that's been replaced in the past out in the gym.
Yep.
And a lot of times you can see asbestos in it, it fits like core core or something like that, you can look at it and it kind of looks like litter in there. Uh, I didn't see any, but how long has that flooring been out there? A healthy coating of nasty on it, that. That's, that's, that's a visual way of testing, but it's not the most.
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I'd like to get it tested, from how I understand, it's not a terribly expensive thing. Um, you just take a small chunk of it, you cut it out and they come and get it. And then test it in the lab and they tell you whether there is or isn't it, and if there is, they tell you what kind it is and what, um, what, uh, concentration it is. Um, so there are a lot of things that have asbestos, there's about six different types of asbestos out there, not all of them are, um, are like the killer. There's three main types that are the ones that are really, um, the ones that you gotta be concerned about. Stuck pieces and. So that's what we're really looking for, make sure that, that, you know, we don't disturb it, so that's where a basement comes in. Getting taken care of, essentially they isolate the whole gym and then you have to take it out and everything's plasticized off. Detailed process of. And then there's monitoring. You know, period of time, so, no, okay. At least, no, it's all sealed up. Ideally, I'd like to eliminate asbestos completely, I think for the most part in the school, just looking through past records, um, we're sitting pretty good. Asbestos insulation is boiling, then we had it took care of that way. I think the eighties when they remodeled, so, um, yeah. So that, that's, uh, that's kind of where we're at as far as, you know, gym floor, um, I'll.
We'll also be pursuing a Healthy Kids, Healthy Schools grant, just like we did for the playground to help us offset the costs. We'll see if that co- that happens, we'll apply for that in August, September.
Okay.
Um, the Eurekaing Project, it looks like it's gonna be completed in August, I've received three D boards as well as some hardware for those doors. Um, just wait for kind of everything else to start trickling in, uh, probably in July, it'll start trickling in a little bit more and then August, they'll be able to install everything and have done and ready to go hopefully before the school year begins. Purchase orders have been submitted and approved with that project. Um, there's a propane tank, uh, right out here, one of the large propane tanks, one of the, uh, gauges is not reading accurate levels, so, um, A1 propane or petroleum, um, is gonna come out on the twenty-sixth, uh, and they're gonna do the propane burn off so they can fix that gauge. Um, the Eastern Fire Department, they have been notified of the date and the time for it and so, um, anybody's listening, don't.
It's gonna smell bad.
Yeah. If the school's not gonna be on fire, there will be a large flame in front of it. Yeah, we'll, we'll have those out there and everything, um, I've already taken care of and taken the weed whacker out there and cut the grass very short all the way around it and, um, just keep the grass really low. The flame will be shooting up, you know, I don't anticipate a whole lot of sparks cluttering out like that, but just in case, we'll have those out there and, uh, um, and that'll be happening again on the twenty-sixth, ten AM, um, for that. Aaron spoke a little bit about the, uh, bus garage doors, uh, getting replaced. Um, that estimate comes to eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. They're just replacing the doors, a few of the vertical rails, but everything, and the, um, the coil springs on it. Other than that, they said everything else looks pretty darn good, um. The whole of that, so, yeah, for to save us money, they just would like to replace the doors, um, one or two vertical rails. And then they'll tension up the, uh, chain and service the, uh, safety laser things, um, make sure. And that should get us another. Um, van purchase, so, uh, our van has finally arrived, it is at the foothills Toyota. I just wanted to first to kind of go pick it up, sign the paperwork and give them the check, and then we'll have the, uh, new twenty twenty-five Toyota Sienna, four-wheel drive. That'll be very nice come winter time, especially with winter sports, it'll provide a much safer ride for our winter athletes and that are going on during that time, so, that'll drive the safety ratings on Toyota Siennas or something. Not that our, not that our transit's not safe, it's just, um, it's not as safe as. And it'll also provide us with a lot more opportunities as far as ath- uh, athletics go, in the event that we don't have a WestRider available. Two vehicles that can take at least thirteen students, so, um, make sure on the day, um, quite a bit of our athletic events. So that'll open up some opportunities, so that's, um, that's an exciting thing.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for.
Uh, looking at new tires for the district van, uh, it is at four thirty seconds, about an inch to tread, um, so, um, tires put on the van, I'll make sure we got, so, try to put these things which are coming up of the wetter season, you know. After some time next thing, I'll make sure those tires are good to go. Um, and then, uh, some new tires for, well, some new rear tires for our bus four. Get those, get those, um, I've had to replace two of them, uh, already on the back, uh, right side, um, that was, I was under inflating the tires, so, um, I thought the tires were needed to be about sixty-five PSI. They need to be.
More than ninety.
Yeah, they need to be about ninety PSI on those tires, so they're very inflated, they through the tread, so I had to replace, um, replace the back passenger side, so to balance out the, um, the tires, I'd like to get the, uh, left side replaced as well, so that way. Nice and balanced out the tread. The front tires are not worse for wear, they look good, they have very good tread on the front tires, so, um, it's in the. Uh, we have some interested drivers for the CDL, um, Miss Carrie Carter and Miss Andy Stow, I've ex- I've expressed interest in doing your CDL and, um, substitute driving or, you know, taking routes or athletic. So, um, I'll be working this summer with Mr. Jared Cudas, uh, with Forbes School District, he's, um, training me on the CDL, um, class, and we'll be working with him again, um, for this, um, just wait for me to get the paperwork, in the meantime, um, I'll have Miss Andy Stow and Miss Carter, um, go ahead and get their medical certificates taken care of. Send them the, um, the CDL supplement, so they can say that and get it written, taken care of, and then, um, they can kind of get into the class for that. That's exciting, always good news to find some interest as far as.
Yes, yes.
Uh, that includes my maintenance and transportation report.
All right, that means I'm.
Yes.
I'm next, um. Enrollment, we, we did pick up a, a stu- Enrollment, we, we did pick up a student right at the end of the school year. So we ended up at eighty-four for our, our headcount. Um, overall for the year, we were down just a tad from, uh, the years past, uh, the previous year, excuse me. So hopefully we'll, uh, address that through some of the things that we're doing that I'm going to share with you here in just a minute. Um, but still somewhat. I guess we'd call it to equalize. Not a lot of fluctuation one way or another, but we'd like to see that green instead of pink. Uh, that is for sure. So we're working on that. That's right. Bringing them on in. Uh, graduation, uh, I thought was, was very well done. Uh, many thanks to Jeff and his team and those of you that could attend and the students and families. We had nice articles in both the Tribune and the Daily Record about our event. And, uh, again, the students I talked to or the graduates seemed happy with the event. So, um, that is always the, the most important thing. If they're happy, then, then we're happy. And I know, uh, speaking with the class of twenty twenty-six, they're, they're already ready, ready to go. I think they already have things on order and plans made. So, um, um, it, it, it's the, uh, it's going to be, uh, uh, quite the ceremony with, with this group. So I'm looking, looking forward to see what they come up with. A couple of things that I'd like to add is I've been accepted to this, uh, I guess a professional development network for superintendents. At no cost to us, which is even better called Leading Now. So most of my training will be done over Zoom sessions. As you know, it's hard for me to get away. Uh, to even to Yakima and the ESD as, as it leaves kind of the, you know, the, the building. I want to say shorthanded, but, uh, just in case of emergencies or things come up that I, I don't like to leave. But it'll only be a couple of days where I'm gone in September and then everything else is, is via Zoom. And like I said, no travel costs, uh, even better. We have entered an agreement with the ESD one oh five to have a shared CTE director. Cost is fairly minimal and, you know, the, the gains that we should get through enhanced funding should more than pay for, uh, our contract wi- with them. So, uh, his name is Jeff Cochran. I think he was last at Seela School District and now is kind of, you know, shepherding all of, uh, ESD one oh fives. Uh, especially the small schools that need that, uh, additional help. So I'm looking forward to that and we'll probably be meeting with him. And probably Patrick Penoir, our science teacher is probably the best candidate since he's got some, uh, outside experiences that we could get him. Rather quickly CTE certified. So, uh, he'll be helping us through that paperwork. So. And then once we get him certified, then we can basically count all of his students as, uh, being in CTE. And then that means enhanced funding for us. So it's a, it's a win-win. Uh, as I wrote this, it says we were still negotiating with, uh, our teachers' union, but we have now settled, which we'll, we'll talk about, uh, in executive session. Um, but yes, we have settled on a, a two-year contract with, uh, with EEA and, um, hopefully both sides are, are, are happy. Um, you know, with negotiating, both sides got to give a little and take a little. So I, I think we've, both sides have done that. And I think we've come up with a, hopefully a, a good compromise. Um, last month you had approved some items for surplus, a couple of buses, some of our old playground equipment. And I guess, how much do you think we raised from our surplus? I was shocked. No, no. We still, we still have two items that are being contested, but we are now at nine thousand dollars overall for. I mean, this is our buses, the playground equipment and, um, so it's, we've had more activity on this surplus than we have had on all the others combined. And I now need to confess, I need to get out of the surplus middleman business because I could not keep track of. Of, of the bids, you know, coming in and making sure I notify the people that they were outbid. So next time I'll be looking at some kind of free software that we can, people can log in and, you know, do their bids that way. Cause, uh, it was, uh. It was quite the process. Friday and Saturday of last week, I, I was on my phone almost all day trying to track down bids and, but. Um, thank you for the community who was offered to purchase some of our items and, uh, you know, they're all going to good homes, uh, of folks here in Easton, which is, which is awesome. Uh, I, it depends on where they go, I guess. Um, the solar panel grant, um, still working on things. I know there's a lot of, since this is Department of Commerce, there's lots of paperwork behind the scenes. And Jeff i- is working on that, uh, along with another gentleman that we're working with. Is that through, was it ATS that we're working through? Who is that other company?
Ellensburg Solar and ATS.
Yes. Yeah. So that's still in, in process. So I don't know if we're going to get that, uh. You know, early August, September, uh, completion date, but. Um, we'll get it when we get it, as we. Okay, so there we go. So, uh, as soon as we can get it, as soon as we can start avoiding some costs. Um, I met with, uh, School Mint. They are the company that we are contracted with about some of our social media, uh, marketing in terms of, uh. Increasing enrollment. I asked them to prepare a little report that I could share with, with the board about kind of how things are going and, uh, where we are. I've asked them to kind of take a pause now in, in July and June because, you know, people are all on vacation and, you know, switching schools and moving schools probably isn't on the top of everybody's mind. They'll, they'll do its, uh, they'll keep the, the, the advertising going, but not at, uh, you know, the, the high frequency like they were doing before. Then when August kicks in, they'll kick it back up again and, um, and I'll start sending out more of the, uh, Facebook targeted ads. But here are the areas that, uh, they're targeting. So basically up from the pass down to, to Ellensburg. Is their target area with, with Facebook. They've done several ads and here their most, uh, their highest performing ads did one on smaller class size, snow sports. And then that kind of a, a combination, one of, of a slideshow, kind of showing all the good things that, that go on here. And they provided some data for us to look at. Um, you can see we did this one in April. Here's the amount of impressions. So you can see that the snow sports one was really, uh, um, a popular ad for our community. And generated the most clicks, uh, which I'm still not quite sure what reach and frequency and all this means in Facebook. But they, they seem to think eleven thousand was a good number and four, four oh six was a good amount of clicks. Uh, then in May we switched again to, uh, a little bit in some different ads, personalized learning, class size. And you can see smaller class sizes really, uh, was the, the most, uh. Most viewed ad with three hundred sixteen clicks. So, you know, we're trying to. Make sure we tell our story of what makes us different than, let's say, uh, you know, like looking at Snoqualmie Valley or Clealum or some of the other school districts. Uh, about what, what we can offer kids. And I just had a parent today who actually moved her daughter, uh, from Clealum a couple of years ago. And, you know, she constantly gets asked about, well, how was the move for you? And, you know, she was just. Had nothing but good things to say about what we do here at Easton on behalf of, of her daughter who was, um. You know, not having such a good time at a neighboring district and came here and is, is doing quite well. So. That's the proof of the, you know, the smaller schools. So like I said, this will continue kind of to ramp back up in August. When, you know, parents and families are hopefully looking for, uh, uh, another solution for, for schools. We have had some families who have, have joined us after they saw these ads. I think a family of a first grader and a fifth grader, if I can recall. Um, but again, we're, we'll keep, uh, we'll keep marketing and keep doing what we're doing and keep trying to spread the word about all the awesome things that, that we do here at Easton. It's uphill battle, but we're working on it. So, um, you know, the, the things that we're offering now, some of the college level courses, some of the different, uh, you know, sports activities and things. And the camping trips, you know, going to the, the Washington coast, going into the caves under Mount St. Helens. I mean, those are things that are going to get, uh, hopefully lots of our families, uh, out there excited about, about coming in Eastern. Cause other school districts can't do it, can't do those types of things. Um, uh, and we are able to, to do that, do our size and do the, you know, just some of the choices that we've made as a district. So, um, I'm hopeful we'll get to good numbers and, you know, we'll just keep, we'll just keep cranking at it. Um, but questions on my report or anything else I can, uh, address to the board?
That was great. I really love the activities and field trips.
Oh, and.
You know, and everything.
Yep.
If we have stuff to submit.
Just send them to me. And yep.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Rach, what, what Jen is looking at is we've redone our website for activities and field trips. We tried to take all of the pictures that the kids and staff has taken and, uh, so we're going to start directing families to go see all those things. But it's pretty impressive what we, we, we do as a school, you know? And when you, uh, when you look back at, after the, the year and go, oh my God, we've done this, 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 it's, it's, it's pretty impressive. And I hope that resonates with our, with our community. That's right. We're gonna, we're gonna up, update pumpkin chucking. And now with our availability to go in the water, we might do some milk carton, uh, uh, what do you call it? Milk carton canoes and boats that they do. Have you ever seen those things where they go well together with duct tape or whatever? And so we'll, we'll see what Mr. P has, has in mind. So. Yep, go around.
But when I moved to Washington, I came up here to be a kayak guide.
Well, there you go. We'll put you to work.
The kayaks got broken by a ginormous cottonwood tree next to our, on a neighboring lot that was.
Well, you know, actually in the, in the Cresto House, I just saw we've got four or five pedalboards that we've just ordered that are sitting there, ready for, for use for next year. So. So thank you very much.
Okay, any other? Oh, there we go.
So now we have a, a couple of things in board business that we'd like to review. This is the quote that Mr. Brandon mentioned for replacement of our doors over on the bus garage. And also for a replacement door on the, the Cresto House, as we're now using Cresto Houses can, storage and all, uh, all, all other kinds of stuff. I think we have some, I saw some barbecues in there today and weed eaters and all of our overflow of, uh. Deliveries are, are in there. So I would probably, probably be good that we secure it a little bit better, I would think.
Is it a one? You're like a two car.
Two cars. So this would be paid for out of a capital project as well, not out of general fund. So that's what we have capital project money for. So. Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
They have Jaguars on it?
Oh, it, that might, that's phase two. That's phase, that's phase two.
Jag wagon parking?
The jag wagon. I know the new van is silver. So is it silver, Jeff? Is that right?
It is.
Oh, nice.
So we'll make it, we'll get it jagged out.
That's good on those windows. I'm sure that he can wrap a van. It'll be fine. It's easy. Just jump on YouTube. Oh, one hundred percent. My husband's done it.
Um, next item under board business is our ongoing policy review. This is the second reading from policies that I shared last month. Um, in reviewing these policies. Make sure I get my notes in front of me here. I did not see any really issues and probably would be my recommendation that we would adopt them all. As is, I can go through kind of summary. Uh, policy five thousand is staff selection and retention policy. Five thousand one is hiring and hiring of retired educators. There are certain guidelines we've got to follow. And certain hour requirements for if we hire a retired person or a higher retired educator, I should say. Um, five thousand four is infection control. I think we want to adopt that one.
Supervisor is really great.
Put it on the list. Uh, five thousand five is employee and volunteer requirements. This is for background checks of our volunteers and of our staff. Five thousand six is removal of the certificate. So in the unlikely event that we need to, uh, ask for a OSPI to remove, uh, a certificate from an individual. That gives us the, the ability to do that. Five thousand ten is non-discrimination policy. Five thousand eleven is, uh, sexual harassment prevention, uh, district staff. Five thousand twelve is, uh, family status and or pregnancy status, um, meaning, uh, if, say, we are interviewing, uh. Teacher candidates and one of the teacher candidates happens to be pregnant, obviously we can't discriminate from, uh, that individual. Five thousand twenty is collective bargaining. Five thousand twenty-one is conflicts within the C, CBA and bar, board policy. Five, uh, five thousand fifty is contract negotiations. Uh, five thousand sixty-one is civility in the workplace. Uh, fifty-two oh one is drug-free school and workplace. And fifty-two oh two is, uh, commercial driver's licensing and, uh, drug testing. So. I will leave that with the board, but it would be my recommendation that we would adopt all of the WASDA model policies. Yeah, these were kind of no brainers to me, uh, all of them. And you'll notice I didn't put a first read on here because it is, next month will be July. So I know I didn't want to give, give the board any more homework. Yes, no. So. Uh, and we're, we're doing fine on our, on our, uh. Updating. Yeah, we have some, some two new ones and these are, I, I pulled these out specifically because they're a little bit, um. These came through kind of the WASDA and some of the administrative associations. Um, the first one thirteen fifteen, the first page, actually I, I copied from another school district because they did a really good job. Uh, and, you know, basically says what the board does and what the superintendent does and what the board does not do. And the superintendent does not do to make sure we're all on the same, uh, same page. So this is really the only part that, that's new. All of this other information, basically that's the same thing as the, you know, the kind of the laminated, uh, card that you have in front of you. This is what we've already adopted as our board protocol, board protocol, excuse me. But now by doing that, we will have it in board policy. So part of, again, I, as my goal is, I'm not going to be here forever. I want to make sure I set up the district when I leave. That we have, um, a functioning relationship between the superintendent and the board. And we all know our, where we are, what our roles are. So, um. I've been in my prior district, uh, it was, I wish we would have had this. Yeah, because, because there was some confusion. I'll put it that way with, with, uh, one of the board members. So, um, again, there's been no changes to, you know, our protocol document other than just this. And this is, I think, from Quincy School District. So, you know, WASDA and WASSA, the Administrators Association has suggested that all districts do this. To make sure that, you know, boards and superintendents don't go get haywire down the road. Things are, thing, when things are easy, everything's kind of hunky-dory. But when things go sideways with, you know, whether it's a labor issue or whether it's financial issue. We've got to have some kind of backbone to, uh, to come back to. So that was the, the rationale for this, uh, board policy. And we currently already have this policy in our. In our, our board, board book. I'm just kind of moving up the date a little bit again. And this is coming from WASDA and WASSA about, uh, some, some recent things that have happened at the state level. That we should probably update this policy, but we have it. This is just some different wording. Uh, basically go through how the complaints go through in a district. And then you have the procedure as well of, of the steps that, that take place. And the rationale of why WASDA and WASSA would like districts to update this is there's now at the last legislative session, there's House Bill twelve sixty, uh, twelve ninety-six. That allows, I would say, much broader ability for communities to, uh, file complaints against either a board or the superintendent. either a board or the superintendent. We're not facing that here, but and in, in the, the House bill, it says you first must follow your own district policy. So that's why they want, you know, districts to kind of make sure that they are protecting themselves too from some of these requests that could come up. Again, we, we aren't facing them here, but as you know, in other districts, there's lots of very charged political issues that are taking place. And this is just a means to make sure that if an issue does come up, we're going to follow our own board policy and our own board procedures to address those complaints before they go to OSBI. So. I will leave that with the board. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but I do think. You guys are adopting this before I can even write anything down here. Like, again, I, I don't know if I, I don't know if I was clear or not, but again, I just, I just want to make sure that we're all protected. Hopefully things never get, go sideways. That's exactly right. Thank you very much. And I would like to have asked the board to go to executive session for a few minutes if that would be okay.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Are we all going to mount high?
All right, I'm going to make sure. Okay, what time are we done? You guys are moving too fast for me. I can't write stuff down.
And he mentioned to me, he was like, well, I'm running skirt, so I don't know what I should do to board.
Of course he can.
Okay. I was like, you know, you gotta talk to him.
Person's resume.
That's, it really does.
Much to put on them to begin with, so.
If they want to alter maybe, you know?
We'll talk.
Hey Jeff, can you hear me? It's Michelle.
Oh, hey, Michelle.
Hey, I got a quick question for you.
Yeah, what you got?
Um, the van rental for the second St. Helen's trip. Do you have a, do you have a price on that? Because I didn't write down, you know, I didn't see the paperwork since you rented it. So I was wondering if you have a price for that so I can put it in our outdoor ed budget?
Yeah, let me go grab my phone here real quick and then I'll pull it up.
Okay, or you could, you could just, you could just, um.
Oh, you want me to email it to you?
Yeah, or just send me like the, the total expense in a text. That would be fine. And you can, you can just do it whenever. You don't have to do it right now, but I just thought I'd ask since I saw you there.
Yeah, no, perfect. Yeah, I'll go ahead and send it off to you.
Okay, awesome. Hey, oh, I'm going to forward you that Tyler Crutchman for, that works for Scarsella.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to send you his phone number. I saw him at the gym this morning because they tried to deliver the topsoil to you, but they couldn't get through to you for a delivery. So I'm going to give you his number.
Did he try calling me?
Yeah, it was the day before the Memorial Day parade. So it would have been that Friday of no school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he said that they had a, they had a truck sitting out there in front of the school for a while. I'm glad they didn't just dump it in the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, that would have worked too. I'd have just taken the tractor and scooped it up, but okay, cool. Yeah, go ahead and send me that number and then I'll get that, I'll just, I can either, I'll email you the, the invoice and then also text you the amount on it.
Great, great. Yeah, and Tyler said that project's probably going to be going on for like five years. So I told him, you know, like with the sports field, I don't know if we're going to have to get material to, to put in there to, you know, level out the field.
Yeah.
But those guys might be a great resource for that if we need that fill material, you know?
Yeah, heck yeah. No, I'll definitely keep them in mind because I'm sure we'll need it at some point out there.
Yeah, and also, you know, I don't know what kind of stuff they do, but it's primarily dirt work. So, you know, I was listening to the conversation about the drain field. So I don't know if that would be something they could assist with or what. But, you know, they're, they're right there for the next five years. So it might be a good idea to utilize them.
Heck, yeah. No, I agree with you. Awesome. Thanks, Michelle.
Okay. All right, Jeff.
I see you.